I'd like to call the October 22nd, 2012 regular meeting of the Frankfurt Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like, first of all, please stand, please, for the invocation by the Reverend John Upseta, the First Christian Church, and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to our flag. Reverend Upseta?
Will you pray with me? Gracious God, today we ask that these elected officials who have dedicated themselves to serving all the people of Frankfurt may be open to each other's ideas and beliefs, respectful of each other's differences, rather than be threatened by them. May they grow in understanding of each other's motives, knowing that sometimes people act out of fear rather than conviction. So replace any fear with insight, O God, and enable them to be patient and kind as they deliberate. Give them strength, real strength, for strength can always find compromise. So working together, O God, help them find a common ground, enable them to move forward with a shared purpose. May they see what is truly important and that which unites our community, and then, focusing on that unity, empower them to banish the roadblocks of ego and fear so that, open and united, they may move forward for the common good of our beloved city. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated, Reverend Upseta. I appreciate you. Mr. Carruth, please call the roll.
Mr. Wilder.
Here.
Mr. Hayden.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. May.
Here.
Mayor Grant.
Here, so all are present. Next item on the business, on the meeting is for the minutes. We have the minutes for September 24th, 2012, regular meeting. On October 8th, 2012, work session. If you had access through these minutes or through the time, do you have a motion presented to the meeting?
Yes.
I move that we dispense with the meeting in minutes and approve those as submitted.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner May, a second by Commissioner Hayden. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Hayden.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Mayor Grant.
Yes, so the minutes are approved as read.
Mayor, could I make a...
Pardon me?
Can I make a point of order, please?
Yes.
Personal privilege. I just wanted to address something. We were at the last meeting of the City Commission work session.
But I got this here in Ross.
I am sorry, Mayor, I'm sorry. I didn't know it was not picking me up. At the October work session, we discussed some issues about personnel action taken against one of our employees in the Transit Office, and I believe we didn't, I didn't make any comments in that, in that open meeting about that issue because I just felt with my experience as an elected official over the years that it was always best not to talk about personnel actions in open session. I just want to call to the attention of folks that our minutes even reflect that, that none of us objected. It just, it says, under Old Business on the second page, it just, I'm just going to read this. It says, "Commissioner Wilder expressed concern about the decision regarding the allegations made toward ex-Transit Superintendent Patty Burris. Following discussion, it was agreed to advance the process by turning the investigation findings over to the Commonwealth Attorney." And there was no objection by anyone on the commission, so I just wanted to go on record that...
Okay.
That some have tried to make this into a more politicized issue and to twist my comments or no comments at that particular meeting into something that's, that's not true. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, Chairman O'Neal, items, and so, Mr. City Mayor?
Mr. Parrish, Mr. Wood.
Well, we have Mr. Nicky Hughes here, our curator of historic sites for the City of Frankfurt, who has decided to retire October 31st, and he will be dearly missed, but he will still be around Frankfurt, and we're sad, but we are kind of bittersweet, happy for him and all his accomplishments, and I'd like to read a few of his major accomplishments. Along with, we've asked his partner, Russ Hatter. Nicky and Russ have made a great team, as everyone knows, through the years, and just a couple of, a couple of major accomplishments, or several. Started Leslie Morris Park on top of Fort Hill, and it's been there for 13 years. Designed and helped lay out the Sullivan House, our visitor center, on top of Fort Hill at Leslie Morris Park, the log home. Invented and organized the Ghost Tours of Frankfurt, and it's been going for 11 years and just had this past weekend, and had very, was very successful. Murder and Maids' Tours, which are sold out every Thursday night in October, and that's been going for 11 years. Frankfurt Heritage Press books, all the nice books that we have about the history of Frankfurt and all that, with a collaboration of different people, and that's been going for 10 years. And one of the true treasures, the Capital City Museum, laid out and will be here for the history of Frankfurt forever, and that's been with us for 10 years at two different locations. The Nancy Wilkinson Riverboat Tour, it's been going for about three years, which is very popular and sold out. Nicky had always wanted to do something like that. Nicky was very instrumental in helping layout and plan some events and get going on the Ward Oats Amphitheater. The Kentucky Pony Car Roundup, which is at Juniper Hill, the car show, which is highly successful with cars from all over the state, it's been going for eight years. And two of his major accomplishments in the last couple of years, the Cornets and Cannons Civil War Bicentennial Music Festival, that was at all over town and ended up at the amphitheater, which drew over 3,000 people from eight different states in celebration of the 150th anniversary of the Civil War, and it was a music festival. And then just recently finishing up the Days of Nights Medieval Festival atop Coe Spring that was highly successful, and the city manager was there, and it drew over an estimated right at 5,000 people. We had 1,300 school kids on Friday and about 3,000 on Saturday and 700 or 800 on Sunday on a very windy day, and then we had them sign in from 10 different states with 125 reenactors, and it took 20 staff to put on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So those are just some of his major accomplishments, not to mention the day-to-day activities, and Mr. Hughes will be sorely missed, and thank you, Nicky.
Nicky, you're one of our treasures, and I'm always the kind of... Everyone in Frankfurt is indebted to you for all you do, and you've always done with such a good spirit, and so I've enjoyed my relationship with you and the time I was able to spend on the board, excuse the board, and then as mayor, and I certainly appreciate it very much. This is a number that's really, it means a lot.
Oh, absolutely. You're a lot.
Yeah, 13 years of service to our city, and certainly grateful to you for all your sincere work and accomplishments for us. Wish you very well, everything you do, and don't leave.
Oh, I'm not going anywhere. I've worked for two mayors and couldn't have gotten better support, help, understanding. I've worked for five city managers, and all but one of those were just as helpful and supportive as they possibly could be. I've lost count of the number of commissioners. Some of them were more helpful than others, but I just want to tell you folks that value the team you have. Steve Brooks brought me aboard, Jim Parrish, Jim McCarty, the people sitting at that back table back there have all made enormous contributions to everything we've done. Value that team, and thank you to them, and thanks to all of you for your support, everything you've done. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And I want to give the commissioners an opportunity, if they'd like to say something, don't leave just yet, please don't leave just yet. I think some commissioners may want to acknowledge some of you. I've started to end and start this way.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the pleasure of knowing Nicky when he worked for the state in the old Capitol and worked on a lot of Civil War projects with him over the years. Was very excited when he was able to come on board with the city. That really opened up our historic sites division tremendously. We've got such a great parks staff anyway, and then adding that division, it was just, you couldn't ask for better staff. In fact, I was traveling, I was down at Fort Jackson, down by Savannah, Georgia, talking to the folks down there, and mentioned where I was from, and then they asked what I did, and I told them I was the mayor, and they asked about Nicky. I told them, well, he works in Frankfurt. He weren't working for us at the time, but it was really interesting in that, in that community to have someone like Nicky who's known nationwide for his expertise, and we owe a lot to you for being able to bring that department and that division to a higher level, and that goes to say with all the folks that are there, the support staff and commissioners over the years who supported you. You're really going to be missed, but I know you're going to be around, and you're going to volunteer a lot, I'm sure. Correct? But we want to say thank you so much for that, for all you've done.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, end of Commissioner?
Well, I wanted to start off by saying that the first time I met Nicky was many, many years ago when I was a student at Second Street School, and I can remember going to the old Capitol, and there he was dressed up in his Civil War outfit or uniform, and I have to say that that was the first time I learned exactly what hard tack was, and so as a history major, I really appreciate that it's come in handy, Nicky. After learning about Nicky's retirement, I was filling around on the Internet and found an old article that was published in the Frankfurt Roundabout. It actually was a letter to the editor by a businessman in 1887 named Johnny Miles. And Mr. Miles was describing what Frankfurt needed to be a great city, and he said the first step that they needed to do was to purchase the land atop Fort Hill and make it a premier park where people can go and escape the hustle and bustle and the heat of the city. "Mr. Hughes, over 100 years later, a community's dream is realized because of your hard work, and I want to thank you on behalf of the City of Frankfurt for all that you've done and your commitment. Thank you and enjoy your retirement."
Thank you. Commissioner?
Well, I guess now that you're stepping down from the city that the Mustangs will be purring a little bit more on the streets, I hope, yeah? And maybe we'll see, maybe we'll see them more parades and such showing off your nice little Mustang treasures. Thank you for all that you've done for the city, Nicky.
Thank you. Mr. Wilder?
We all really appreciate your years of service to the city, and I think we're all really looking forward to your years of volunteer service to the city. Thanks in advance.
Consulting.
We'll see about that.
All right. I guess that's, anybody else want to praise him?
Mayor, we're going to call him by his real name at the end of the meeting, so you can leave before that.
All right, all right. Thank you. Thank you. That's all the Chairman O'Neal items. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments, and probably everyone here knows the rules to try to follow best you can, and that is that any citizen can address the commission on any topic. We ask that you identify yourself when you come to the microphone, and then try to keep your comments within five minutes, and we thank you for that. I'll say we've got someone here already, so you let her have, make your comments.
My name is Lucy Stevens, and I live at 200 Thistlewood Avenue, and I'm here to report that I'm, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that I'm approaching the fourth month without Frankfurt Transit services, and of course, there will be those here who want me to specify that the Transit service is available, it's just not, I have no intentions of using it, the one that they are offering. I received a packet of information finally from, and that's not a derogatory comment, but I received a packet of information from Chief Will Hoyt detailing the particulars of why the decision was made to continue to keep me off of the fixed route. And that report that you have before you is the third and last one that I'm going to write. I'm worn out with it. It references the materials that he issued that I received on the 10th day of October, and I want to speak to what I feel is a defamation campaign within the body of the materials. And it was a remark that was made in the body of the materials that read as follows. I'll see if I can quote this. "I don't know if it's true or not, but a routine passenger said Ms. Stevens reeked of alcohol when she boarded the bus, no, not when she boarded the bus, but the day of the incident where I was removed from the bus, which was August the 3rd, 2012. It is hard to reek of something that you don't use. I don't use alcohol, period, of any kind ever, day or night. I'm not opposed to the use of alcohol at all. That's an individual choice. I cannot afford it, so I don't use alcohol." And the reason I'm referring to it is because when the person said, "I don't know if it's true or not," that surely would alert you to the kinds of people that you're dealing with here. They're government bullies. If you don't know that something's true or not, then you don't state it, and you certainly don't put it in material that could be read by others. That's a defamation, pure and simple, and it's wrong. It's very wrong. So I wanted to state that. Also, I was put off the bus based on lies from a government bully, and I've got, I believe, a very strong case for that. And I just wanted to say that I am going into my fourth month with no transportation. It's been a terrible, terrible hardship, but under the circumstances, and after you read this, I think you will agree with me that nobody in their right mind, with what has occurred to me, based on the facts that they seemingly have, would get back on the bus, on any bus that Frankfurt Transit offers, and ride under these circumstances. It's too risky, is what I'm trying to tell you, so I'm walking. And I also speak, lastly, and I'm probably using up all my time now, I don't know how much time I have, maybe Mayor Grant can tell me, but...
About a minute.
About one minute.
Yes, ma'am.
But I end the report by saying that I am basically under house arrest, and I really feel I am. It's a terrible thing. I also write within the body of the paper that when people hear things they don't want to hear, then they want to defame the person who is speaking things that they don't want to hear. So they call him a whore, or an alcoholic, or a drug addict, or mentally ill. They can't just have a disagreement, or they don't agree with you politically, or they call something to your attention that you did in the name of the government that you sit behind that is flat wrong, and instead of accepting that, then they defame you. And that's what's happened to me here. I need Frankfurt Transit, and I need the fixed route. I'm not going to report my goings and comings to the Frankfurt Transit Office by calling 24 hours in advance to go to the supermarket. I want to be able to go down to the bus stop like any normal human being, get on the bus, and go to the supermarket, and come back home. You've got people in charge in this area that aren't serving you well, and I'll be glad to meet with them. I'd see one of them here tonight, and if he'd like to talk with me, it would have to be a referee, because I'm very, 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 very angry about this. I don't deserve it, and I'm bitter about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
And thank you for the time.
Thank you. All right, any other citizen comments?
Could I comment on that, please, Mayor?
Pardon me?
May I comment on that, please, Mayor?
Oh, yes, I looked around to see if I didn't want to comment. Yeah.
Sorry. Ms. Stevens, I understand it's been four months, I was checking the emails, I guess it's the same letter that you received, but in it, it also says that Transit officials would be willing to reconsider the ban in the future. Four months is future, four months ago was past. If it can be assured that your behavior toward drivers and other passengers will conform to the published rules. Do you feel willing that...
No, see, I would like for you to read the report, because I think that you will, under this published rules and all that, this is such a ruse. It's a ruse. In other words, the accusations that have been made are false. They are false and can be, I believe, documented. That's my opinion. Now, I don't have any, I can't do anything about this, I mean, I don't know what you, what you're saying. Here, here's the thing, if you don't, I said many years ago, many years, when you read this, I think you'll see what the pitfalls are. If you tell me the rules, I will be glad to abide by the rules if I know what the rules are. If I don't know what the rules are, then it's difficult to stay within the guideline. So I would appreciate it. I would also like for you to read all three reports back to back together, if you have any time to do that with two twins, and, I mean, with a set of twins and so on.
Yeah, I have time to read.
But, thank you, and I appreciate you being interested, but as far as following the rules, I don't believe I would ever measure up. It's very clear that if I can be put off the bus for things that did not occur on the 3rd of August, then it can happen again and again and again. That's my point here. So rather than risk that, I've just been walking, you know? So that's my point. And what I keep doing, I'm not going to do it anymore because I'm pretty much done, is that I've addressed everything that I know to address, and I feel that it's reasonable.
All right.
Now, if you disagree, let me know, you know, where you think.
Commissioner Wilder, you want to come in?
I guess I do have an additional question. I mean, I agree that folks without cars do have a right to, you know, travel safely around the city, and that's a, I mean, that's even a debate that's slated for later in the agenda, but...
What do you mean, travel right to?
As in, you know, you're saying you don't have a car, so you have a right to get around the city and to rely on public transit.
Well, no, I've been told it's not a right, that it's a service.
Well, it's, yeah, public transit is a service, but I mean, I, I do believe that folks should have the, it's kind of like, I mean, driving isn't a right either.
No, it's not.
Driving is a privilege that's afforded to folks as long as they obey the rules of the road.
Exactly.
If folks disobey the rules of the road, they can have their license suspended or revoked and lose that privilege. So you're, you're right, it is, it's all a privilege as opposed to a right.
It's not really a right.
But it's an important privilege, and it's, it's important that folks do have that ability, provided they, you know, do so in a safe manner that abides with, by the rules. I haven't, you know, regarding the paperwork you just gave us, the five-page document you just gave us, obviously I haven't had a chance yet to read it word for word.
Oh, okay, sorry to interrupt you.
The allegation, you know, stemmed from the charge that a piece of paper, a wad of paper was thrown towards the front of the bus.
No, at the bus driver.
At the bus driver, right, exactly, and that's the, and so the debate then gets into this question of intent, as in, were you intending to throw it at the driver, or were you simply intending to throw it towards the front of the bus? And that, that's the kind of thing that an audiovisual tape, it can't, it can't really show intent, so that, that's the kind of thing where I don't believe that the bus' security camera clears that up. It confirms that, you know, a wad of paper was indeed thrown towards the front of the bus. The question is simply whether or not that was intended for the driver or whether or not it wasn't, and I understand that's, that could be argued either way. I mean, my, but, I mean, but the bit of this that I have read says that the audiovisual tape should clear this up, so I just want to, I mean, you're not...
Well, may I say, I'm not, I'm not trying to interrupt you, but I think it would, and I think a lot of people just don't want to go, it's a boring subject, let's face it, you know, it's, we're not talking a very interesting subject, but if you would read the materials that Chief Will Hoyt sent, and then my response to those materials, and you don't have to agree with me, I'm not here to ask you to do that, not at all. I'm simply going to be sure that you hear from me and that you hear my position and you hear what happened from my perspective. Now, if you don't agree with her, you want to support the other person, and that's the way life is, you know, I understand that. I'm simply saying that in my opinion, that's wrong. That's the wrong decision, because what was allegedly done by me did not occur. I did not throw anything at the bus driver. That didn't happen, but I was told that's what put me off the bus. Now, I don't really publicly, like I've said before here, I don't want to, because you're not getting the whole story, and so that makes it look bad for me. That's why I don't want to go into too much more detail about this, because then I'm the only one that looks like who's doing any explaining, and I frankly don't feel like I owe any more explanation. I was told I was put off the bus, I told the people there I didn't do it, and then I remained off the bus for four months. Now...
I guess, and I guess, and so that, I guess that drives my, my larger question, because I believe that you've communicated your perspective on this.
Well, that's fine.
Pretty thoroughly. I believe that staff have as well. I mean, is...
Well, I understand you don't...
At what point is the probationary period that's referenced? I mean, at what point does it, at what point does her status come up for reevaluation?
Well, see, what I was told, and this is another thing, this is not a small matter. I was told, you will no longer be riding Frankfurt Transit. Now, they want to use the word suspended, that was never used with me, ever. Now, you may think this is minutia, is that the word, or that I'm splitting hairs. Not at all. I was told when I got off of the bus, you will no longer be riding Frankfurt Transit. Even the police officer acted astounded by that, and I had to ask why, because I didn't know what, why, I said, "Why?" And then I was told, "Because you threw..." And I, I didn't even quite even hear what it was they said I threw. I said, "Well, no, I did not, that's a lie."
Well, this is an instance, then, where the, where the official public record, which says that you were suspended, works in your favor, as in, you know, folks can debate what was said or not said. The official record says that you were suspended, which...
Well, what is the official record? Where is that? I mean, who has that?
Well, that's, I mean...
Could I have a copy of the official record from somebody, whatever that is? If you ever find it, just send it, you know, I'd like to have the official record cut out.
And our discussion is, my, my understanding is that, is that you were suspended from the route and that you would, your status would be reevaluated in the future, as Commissioner Hayden referenced.
In the future.
And my question, and this isn't a question for you, but my, my question is, is at what point does this...
Does the future arrive?
Probationary status?
If I could answer that, ma'am?
Please do.
Actually, it's open-ended, it's not like a six-month suspension, 12-month suspension. We'd be willing to discuss this with Ms. Stevens if she is, you know, willing to abide by the rules. After the last meeting, we had an hour-long meeting after our commission meeting, and that is what I conveyed to her then, and then she requested the documents that Transit has regarding her previous incidents, and that's what was provided to her. Quite frankly, quite frankly, I think if, if she would meet with Transit people and promise to abide by the rules, and the rules are the same for everyone.
Sure.
They're published and they're put on the buses, she'd previously been distributed a set of the rules, I think they would be willing to reconsider.
For what it's worth, Ms. Stevens, I, I mean, I'm inclined... For what it's worth, Ms. Stevens, I mean, I'm inclined to agree with her.
I know. We, I need to sit down. We need to get off the subject.
We do have a set of rules for riding the transit system that frankly I think is pretty reasonable. And if you feel you can abide by them, then I wouldn't have any objection to you continuing your service again. And in all fairness, if you feel you can't abide by them, then I would have to support staff's decision to discontinue your use of the service.
Here's what I'm trying to say, and then we'll surely stop having this be such a public thing for me at my expense. I want to say this. I never received the rules. He's got the very top page. I think the best thing is to, and I think it's only fair, to ask you to read what I submitted. And then, when you talk about the published rules and so on, you will see that I never got those. I never got the rules and the regulations, ever, until whatever day it was here, the last month, I believe it was. But I'll go on and sit down. You know, I don't, I understand that you're supportive of the current situation. I get it. I think that it's wrong, but that, you know, that's, but I understand. And thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Stevens, just as a closure here, if you would feel like you want to talk with someone from the Transit people about what the city manager mentioned, please do that and see if they can be resolved, okay?
No, I don't want to speak with any of the Transit.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else make citizen's comments? Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Okay. All of you know me, but just, I'll introduce myself. Brent Swager. I'm the president of Walk Bike Frankfurt. I also, in my professional life, am a transportation engineer. So I work in designing highways and roadways for my profession. I guess, just for the next couple of minutes, I'd like to just make a few comments regarding the agenda item that's near the end with the proposal about Louisville Hill lane reconfigurations as part of the sewer project. First off, I'd like to thank you and also thank Jeff Hackard for hosting the public meeting that was last Monday regarding the discussion of that proposal. I think it was good to hear what people had to say about it. I think there was some interesting thoughts, many of which I hadn't heard before. So I thought that was really good. And I've talked with almost all of you about, individually, about this proposal, both the merits and the perceived problems of what is on the table. And what I've also done through this whole process is tried to listen to the people that are opposed to it. And frankly, after hearing just about every argument that could be put out there, I really am at a point where I do not see any downsides to this proposal. What we're talking about is a bike lane going up the hill and a shared lane coming down the hill. That's the simple version. What, the very specific proposal that each of you have seen, it's something that is not unsafe for bicyclists to add that bicycling on Louisville Road. In fact, it makes it safer because bicyclists are using it now. So adding that improves the bicycling, the safety for bicyclists. It's not unsafe for motorists. In fact, it's a, would be a safety improvement for motorists for many reasons. One is the ability to detect and maneuver around falling rock off that cliffside going up the hill. It improves the sight distance going up the hill. Passing, which is often done in a dangerous manner, is eliminated. And you have a median that separates traffic coming up and down the hill. So improves motorist safety. One of the other things that I've heard many times is that it's unsafe for ambulances and emergency vehicles. That is not true either. That is something that's being thrown out there, but what we have in our proposal is 20 feet of pavement in which a stopped vehicle can pull over, or a vehicle can pull over to stop an emergency vehicle around. 20 feet is plenty wide. Parking lane is typically about seven feet. That means you have an extra 13 feet for a 10-foot, or eight to 10-foot wide emergency vehicle to get through. Plenty of room to do that safely. And it's not a traffic capacity issue. Okay? So it's not a safety problem. It's not a traffic capacity problem. So what I feel is that each of you were elected to, and elected to make decisions for the citizens of the city. Sometimes you're putting, put into a position where you have to make difficult decisions. This is not a difficult decision. I feel like this is easy. There are no downsides to the proposal, despite what some people's feelings are. There's very little to no cost to this proposal. It's completely reversible. Should it fail, which it won't, but should it fail, it could easily be reversed. So all we're asking is for the commission to support the idea. Ultimately, the decision comes down to the state. The Transportation Cabinet will make that decision, and when they make that decision, I'll be done in just five seconds. When they make that decision, it will be based on safety. That will be their primary objective. So if they feel that what is being proposed is unsafe, they will nip it. So it's really, there's no downsides, and you sort of have one more layer of bureaucracy to ensure that the right decision is being made. So when you get to that item on the agenda, I hope that you, that there's a motion to recommend approval of it, and I hope all five of you vote yes to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Of course, this will be on the agenda later on, but it could go through the agenda. Any other citizen?
First of all, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to be here and...
Your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Stuart Herrod.
Okay, thank you.
I run the Folk Bike Recyclery downtown, a nonprofit bicycle shop. And I'd like to add that currently, right now, Frankfurt does not have a retail bicycle shop. We are Frankfurt's bicycle shop. Over, a majority of the bicycles that leave our shop are someone's primary transportation, not just for recreation or exercise, but that's somebody's car. And we have no formal connection for bicycles with the west side of town, and I feel that's very important. We have a lot of people that use our shop on a daily basis that ride their bicycles to get to us, and Louisville Road is just like for motorists. That's generally the most convenient way for them to come, and getting downtown, that is the safest. But I think we can all agree that, in its current state, Louisville Road is not safe for bicycles, and I have to agree with that statement. And I think it just makes sense, you know, this is the time, the perfect opportunity to make it safer. Leaving it as it is isn't gonna, isn't gonna fix anything in that regard. And like I said, a lot of people do use that, that they're fair, as well as the other main roads around Frankfurt. It, like I said, most of our bikes that leave the shop are somebody's transportation. That's how they get around town, and it's needed. The bicycle culture in Frankfurt is growing. Gas prices keep going up. More and more people are using bicycles. And, you know, we're trying to make that, make Frankfurt a safe place for everybody. As Brent said, I think it would, it'd make sense all the way around, even for the motorists. But please take that into consideration when you make your decision, and I appreciate your letting me...
Okay, thank you, Stuart.
...peace my mind. Thank you.
How you guys? My name's Randall Robinson, and I'm an everyday bicycle commuter. I work on old houses, any houses, but I support this lane going uphill and the normal lane coming down here. I support this whole idea. However, this might be just a ticket to make people even more aware that the bicycles share the road with everybody. I mean, there are days when I get up and it's like bumblebee, or it's like honeybees. I check the traffic, and I'll know when to wear the helmet that day or not. People still come at me. People still come over into the bike lanes. So, you know, by adding some more paint up here, it might make people a little more aware that there are people that live and commute and work with, on bicycles every day. But honestly, in many occasions, across Capitol Avenue Bridge, that's one bridge where I will ride the sidewalks, guys, simply because people don't give a ditty squat. They'll run, they'll come right over at you. The same with many a places, even along Broadway where there is paint. They still come over into the bike lanes. That's still crowding the bicycle over into the pedestrian areas. You see what I'm saying? By putting this bike lane down there and down, or up the hill, what it's doing is it's another, it's another sign saying, "Look, this is a bike-friendly city. Be aware of these people riding bicycles. We live with them. We have to adjust with them every day, just like the bicycles have to do with common, everyday vehicular traffic laws." We have to operate the same way. Some of us out there don't, still don't do that. But, and I'm guilty of, only because I fear the traffic that day. And when I use the reference of tending honeybees, you know, when you go up and tend honeybees, you check them out before you go messing around with them too much. That's the way I do the traffic. You know, when I take off that morning, I'm going on my way to work. I'm looking at the traffic, seeing how it's buzzing. If it's crazy, then I put my helmet on, and I start being more alert of the intersections I'm making. Now, there are some mornings I come out and everybody's relaxed and cool with the bicycles and having a great time, and everybody, everything seems to flow. But the days when they're not, those are the days I get concerned about. And I think that this lane will also help bring awareness to that we are a bicycle-friendly city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Nathan Rome. I reside at 624 Logan Street. I am a bicycle commuter. I bike, I live in South Frankfurt, and I actually bike to the west side of town. So very selfishly, I'll say that this would benefit me quite directly. And, you know, I will say that my wife and I, I grew up in Frankfurt. I went to Second Street and Frankfurt High, and we lived out in Shelby County for seven years, and part of my attraction to come back to Frankfurt a year ago was that Frankfurt is becoming progressively more bike-friendly. And within the past year, I decided to become a bike commuter myself. And I got to tell you, I presently am not comfortable with the idea of biking up Louisville Road, but would definitely use a lane if there were one provided there. I do bike down Louisville Road presently, and just, you know, want to echo what's been said here. I also just want to add that I think that the primary beneficiary of this is actually not bicyclists, but it's pedestrians. Whenever I come down Louisville Road, you know, I see, I mean, there's a lot of people who rely on Louisville Road as a primary means of transportation for walking up Louisville Road, and there's no buffer there. I mean, if you've ever walked up and down in that, you know, road, there's just, practically speaking, there's no buffer. And this proposal would actually provide a buffer to make it safer for pedestrians, who I think in the short term are actually going to benefit a lot more than cyclists. You know, there's that argument out there that, you know, I'll just say that since I've started cycling, I've had a number of people say to me that they too have considered it, and they would like to do that, but they're not currently, you know, comfortable doing so because of the lack of infrastructure here in Frankfurt. So I would just say as a citizen that, you know, something I'm very much looking forward to and looking for from leadership here is to continue to support making Frankfurt more bike-friendly. Thank you.
May I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
What route do you use right now? I mean, I heard you say you take Louisville Hill down. You take Lafayette up?
Yeah, it really depends on what I, I typically take Lafayette up today. It's certainly the efforts that were made by Walk Bike Frankfurt to get the parking lane, you know, widened have helped, although, you know, I do, I mean, I ride in traffic. So, you know, I would say I'm not the average cyclist that way. I mean, I go across, you know, 127 and 60 and get out there at 4:30, you know, with the traffic, and I move, you know, I mean, I'm moving with traffic, you know, but currently take that. But my children go to Second Street School, so I have a lot of occasion to where if I'm either going with them to school, you know, to go up Louisville Road, or if I'm coming to get them after school, if I'm coming to meeting downtown, Louisville Road's the...
Okay. Thank you for answering that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Nathan Brown. I'm a South Frankfurt resident. So I just wanted to address one of the issues that, I also want to address the same issue of the Louisville Hill bicycle lane proposal, and what seems like it's become one of the, if not the central issue in this debate, and that is the issue of safety. And it seems it's being suggested by numerous critics of the proposal that the addition of bike lanes would somehow make the road less safe for cyclists. Now, I'll allow that there are some very legitimate, debatable concerns out there. I'm with Brent, though. I mean, I think, I think there's a counterpoint to all those, but I think there are some legitimate concerns. But safely, safety, and specifically diminished safety, is just simply not one of them. So let's not be foolish about this and, you know, realize that the addition of a bike lane equals more safety for cyclists. I usually hate when anecdotes get substituted for facts, but in this case, I have a pretty good anecdote, I think. So I'm going to share it with you. About it, most of you probably know this. Until about a year ago, I was a regular commuter, a bicycle commuter. I rode Wilkinson Boulevard to and from work every day, or just about every day. And I did that until I was struck by a motorist who, quote, "Didn't see me," so therefore made no attempt to change lanes or slow down or anything like that. It was not long after that incident that the city, the commission, really gave a renewed effort to completing Riverview Trail. So I want to thank you all for that. That was a godsend to me, and for anybody that works at Fair Oaks or Buffalo Trace or anything like that. But that's just one of many, many routes here in Frankfurt. There's a lot of variables in play, obviously, in any accident, you know, the weather, all that. But one thing I think is for certain, that had Riverview Trail existed on September 26, 2011, I would have been off the road and, as consequence, much more safe as a cyclist, not less safe. Thinking about this proposal has also made me kind of compare Wilkinson and Louisville, the portion, southbound portion of Louisville Hill that's in question here, and I realized there's quite a few similarities between the two. Both have two lanes in one direction, which would seemingly make it an ideal situation where cars and bikes could share the road. Both are also 45 mile per hour speed limit. I think what's different, though, about the two is really telling. One, Wilkinson is pretty much flat, I mean, totally flat. So on a good day, I could easily hit speeds of 20 miles per hour and, like Nathan Rome said, you know, really more or less fit in with traffic. A cyclist climbing Louisville Hill, I mean, a really good cyclist is going to, is going to do really well to hit like 10 miles an hour. Wilkinson is also, by and large, straighter than Louisville Road, which gives better visibility, whereas Louisville Road, you know, hugs the curves a lot tighter as it ascends. So basically, what you're going to end up in the situation is you're going to have a fast-moving vehicle with little time to see and react to a slow-moving cyclist that's sharing the lane with them under the current situation. So I also want to, so that's my anecdote. I also want to add some facts to that to address this issue of safety. One is some data that was released in 2011 by New York City Department of Transportation. It studied some of the impacts of bicycle lanes that they had added to their city, and they determined that the accommodation, that the addition of bicycle accommodations decreased crashes for all road users, not just cyclists. decreased crashes for all road users, not just cyclists, all users of the road. Yes, sir. Bad time? Okay, I'll wrap it up. By 16% and decreased injuries by 21% and cut speeding over 70%. So, this is really an issue that, and there's more data, lots of studies that echo these same findings, that basically this is increased safety not only for cyclists, but for all users of the road. And just one quick anecdote to kind of, to kind of sum it up. I understand that change is difficult. You know, I think we've all been on a road that we drive every day and all of a sudden, bam, stop sign there and, you know, it throws us for a loop. So, I don't want to discount the fact that we are talking about changing the road and that is a legitimate concern. But with all due respect and quite frankly, I think this issue is not about the users of the road that have been driving Louisville Hill every day for their life and this is gonna change them. It's not about me either. It's not about Walk Bike Frankfurt. It's really about the kids, kids that are now and kids that aren't even born yet, who are going to grow up in a city where this is the norm. They're not gonna know any different. They're gonna learn to walk, bike and drive in a city that has shared walk-bike accommodations and they won't think twice about, you know, how do you do this, you know, anything like that. Computers are the same way, you know. What if 25, 30 years ago, we had said, oh, computers are scary, you know, we're gonna have to change our skills and our workforce and to, you know, throwing them out, you know, where would we be today? I think we have to embrace change and what good can come of this. So, thank you all for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Donna Hacker. I live on Dogwood Lane, about 200 feet from Louisville Hill. Thank you for this opportunity to comment tonight and thank you for last week's session. That was incredibly informative and thoughtful and very well-conducted. I just wanted to say that I had the pleasure of helping Good Shepherd School with their Ride for the Green yesterday, which was a three-mile kind of family fun ride through downtown Frankfurt. I think they had about 75 people who participated and of that 75, I'd say a good 50 of them were kids. I was bringing up the rear, which is what I usually do when I'm riding my bike, and kind of trailing a young girl, maybe 10 years old, who rode the entire three miles with her dad, kind of running alongside her, keeping pace, you know, making sure that she was all right. Anyway, I just wanted to say that, you know, as a cyclist, I'm not asking for any special accommodation. I'm just asking for a little respect and a little bit of an improved opportunity to ride my bicycle safely and responsibly around town. And also because I want people like that little girl to grow up in a community, whereas Nathan says, it's normal to ride your bike from one point to the next. And it's normal to be able to walk around and not have to rely on a parent or somebody else for transportation. That feeling of freedom when you're a kid is the best thing in the world. And so, I'm asking you tonight to support this proposal that Walk Bike has submitted. And I'm asking you that if you don't support this proposal, to please, I guess it's kind of a challenge, to let us know what your plan is and what your ideas are to improve accessibility for bicyclists and pedestrians in this little town. Because that little girl who was riding her bike down Capitol Avenue yesterday, she kind of deserves that answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, everybody. Jason Delon. I just came to support today, but I found after hearing all these great comments and good feedback, I actually had a little bit to add myself. I have a master's in urban planning and I've lived in a lot of major bike-friendly cities. I've lived in Portland, Oregon. I've lived in New York City. I've lived in Boston. I've lived in Beijing, China. And I've really seen how bicycles in these communities have completely interacted and become part of primary and secondary transportation throughout the cities. And one thing, and moving back to Kentucky about four years ago, that I was really struck by is, in many ways, it feels like a very big town. It takes 10 minutes to get to just about anywhere, you know? But if you actually look at how the town is laid out, things are much closer together than you would expect. So, Home Street is only about 1,000 feet, 1,500 feet from Main Street up by KSU, but they're not connected. So, it takes five to 10 minutes or longer if you're walking or biking to get between those two points. And one thing I've been really impressed by Mike Bonford and Brent is their attempt to map out the city in a different way, to say, okay, these are how the roads have been developed in the city over the last 100 years of its existence, but how can we start connecting in between these roads to create pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly routes? So, the KSU Trail's a great example on, and the city's working with them on that. The new Riverwalk Trail's a great example. So, when I look at the city, I don't just see the city as it is today. I see what it's gonna be in 20 or 30 years if we continue along with this vision of a city that is interconnected and open for a lot of people to move around. And the other piece I'll say is, it blows me away that we have Capitol View Park. And one person told me that, a number of people have told me, that it has one of the best mountain biking areas in the whole state. People come from Lexington, they come from Louisville, they come from Eastern Kentucky, up here to Frankfurt, like thousands of people sometimes on the weekend to come bike here. So, already, we have a culture of being a bike-centric place. And when those people come here, they don't just bike and leave, they go downtown, they hang out, they eat at the restaurants, they bike around, they check out the city. And another thing I'll say is, I've had a lot of friends come to visit from New York, from Boston in the last four years. And every time they come here, they're like, this is a beautiful, beautiful city. And as a native, sometimes it's a little hard to see that, you know? We just see what we've always seen. But they come here and they see this river valley, they see this town, and they think it's gorgeous and they'd like to spend more time here. So, I would like to argue that these bike lanes connecting up to the city is also an economic development opportunity. We're rebranding the town, we're making it greener, we're making it more sustainable. And this will attract more people to want to spend their money here, spend time here and maybe even live here. So, that's what I'd like to say, but I really hope you guys vote for this because, as Brent said, it's gonna get kicked up to the state and ultimately, they're gonna make a decision if it's safe or not. And so, you guys don't have to worry about that as much. It's just more, is this something that's good for our city? And I definitely think it is. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Florine Miller and this is my daughter Lydia. And we live downtown on Broadway Street. And she recently got a bike from Stewart and is a new cyclist downtown. And I think that this is a great effort to, as everybody else has said, to help the children that are coming up to be able to have a safer place to ride their bikes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, just briefly, my name's Reba Rai, I live on Logan Street. And when I first moved to Frankfurt, close to 40 years ago, I was on Lafayette Drive and I primarily got around on a bicycle. And so, in response to the concept that possibly that's one way to get up the hill, that's not even with the access of the lane, there's a lot of driveways in and out. It's not a very safe street for bicyclists who want to access the west side of town. And I'm a professor at Kentucky State University and I don't pretend to speak for the university at all, but I have had international students live in my home in the past who got around primarily on bicycles. And that kind of, people that come from other countries, as has been pointed out, that find it very difficult here as their primary mode of transportation. I think that it's a very friendly thing to do in that sense. I think that the data I'm impressed with that comes forward about the safety issues from all areas, I would just encourage you to consider this seriously. I haven't bicycled for a long time. It's my primary means of communication, of transportation. But I also think of my children, my grandchildren and ways that this community can be even better than it is. And the vitality of downtown is not just people coming in, it's people able to live downtown and transport themselves safely and in a fashion that does not harm anyone else and makes things safer. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll see, no more? We'll move on to the...
If I could, Mayor, one comment.
Certainly.
We're moving on. And this is a, as you know, we've been taking, collecting as much citizen input as we can and as many forms as we can. We've held a public forum last week to collect citizen comment. I see a few people here who were there before and some folks who apparently couldn't make it to that forum. It's good to see here today. We've also had an online poll on the city's website and we've also been accepting emails by way of the city manager. And those emails have been collected and presented to us. So, we've been collecting a lot of comment and have obviously been tallying that comment. I guess I just have one question for the folks in attendance before we move on. And we're gonna, we're gonna discuss this issue, obviously, down the agenda. There are some folks who commented just now in favor of the bike lanes, who were at, who did, who also commented in favor of the prior forum. And so, obviously, we're not tallying your name twice in support. There are some folks who have spoken, who have given their opinion here today, who couldn't make it to the prior forum. So, I think obviously it's only appropriate to add your names to the tally. I'm just asking for a show of hands. Is there anybody here today who couldn't make it to the prior forum who, you know, whose name or opinion hasn't been counted on the record, who is here to support the bike lanes? Oh, and not counting the folks who spoke today?
I wasn't here at July's, but I'm here today.
Well, you spoke today. So, your name, I got you on the list. Did I see two hands? Three hands? Four hands? Okay. Is there anybody who couldn't make it, who didn't speak today or at the prior forum, who is here to oppose the bike lanes? We just want to make sure that everybody's opinion is counted. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Now, move on to ordinances. There being none? Into orders, there being none? Resolutions, there being one?
Thank you, Mayor. 6.1 is a resolution of the City of Frankfurt, Kentucky, authorizing the certification of a cultural district for at least 10 years to be named a Frankfurt Cultural Arts District and authorizing the mayor to sign all documents pertaining to this certification. Kentucky Arts Council has opened applications for Cultural Arts District and Downtown Frankfurt Incorporated has agreed to take the lead on this project by preparing and submitting the application. Submission of this application will not have any financial impact on the city at this time.
All right, July's motion pertaining to Resolution 6.1. Commissioner May, approval, Commissioner Finn, for seven.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Congress.
Mr. Wilder?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Woo-hoo, yeah.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
May Brand.
Yes, so Resolution 6.1 is approved. Next on the agenda is consent item, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 7.1 is to authorize Change Order Number Three to the construction contract with Kenny Incorporated for the construction of approximately 5,000 feet of gravity sewer at the Jim Beam Bottling Plant and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents associated with the change order. Change Order Three is a balancing change order to close out this project. The total contractual amount is summarized below. The change order number three is $19,710.52 with a total revised contract of $1,927,882.81. 7.2 is to authorize the mayor to sign a joint funding agreement with the U.S. Geological Survey to operate a gauging station upstream of Lock Ford Kentucky River. This gauging station data is used extensively by the sewer department to monitor river flows relative to our discharge permit requirements. Annual cost to the department is $2,580 for federal fiscal year, October 1 to September 30, 2013. 7.3 is to authorize the mayor to sign four lease of mortgage for property located at 966 Devil's Hollow Road for the sewer department. It's, the property owner at that address signed a promissory note, mortgage has since been paid the amount in full. Document will be filed by the Office of the Clerk of the Franklin County Court to release the second mortgage. 7.4 is to authorize Change Order Number One to a contract with Leak Eliminators LLC for the rehabilitation of approximately 4,500 feet of gravity sewer main and 30 manholes in the Myrtle Avenue Sewer Phase Two project and authorize the mayor to sign all documents relating to the project. Subsequent to the award of the original contract, it was determined that there were several laterals connected to the sanitary sewer and this change order sets a unit price for these laterals, I'm sorry, for laterals to be found today and any additional laterals found during the remainder of this project. The original contract was for $678,591. This change order number one is $28,425, total revised contract of $707,016. 7.5 is to authorize Change Order Number One for the Juniper Hill Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents associated with this project. This is, in October of 2011, Sewer Department awarded a contract to InstaForm Technologies for the rehabilitation of 4,000 feet of sanitary sewer in the Juniper Hill subdivision. It was determined that there was significantly more heavy root cleaning required than originally anticipated. There were also some cast iron pipe patches where lateral cutouts were made and later determined that the laterals were abandoned. This change order is for $15,350.24. The original contract was $312,054.50. Total contract's $327,404.74. 7.6 is to authorize a contract award to Randall Davis Construction Company for the construction of a boat ramp at the wastewater treatment plant and authorize the mayor to sign all documents associated with this project. As part of the KPDS permit, the sewer department is required to perform periodic sampling of the Kentucky River upstream and downstream of Lock Ford. Access to Pool Four is easy because of the several boat ramps that exist. However, access to Pool Three is extremely limited and requires a drive of approximately an hour to arrive at the boat ramp. This ramp will allow more convenient access to this pool. This ramp will not be open to the public, but will be available for city departments and other public entities to use. Engineer recommends awarding the contract to Randall Davis Company, the lowest qualified bidder, at $124,941. 7.7, authorize a surplus in sale of property no longer used by the sewer department. Purpose of the item is declare surplus a 2008 Sterling Vector and assorted cell phones that are no longer functional. Cell phones will be publicly advertised and sold by sealed bid, but the department is currently talking with Calvert City Utilities about purchasing the Vector. In the event Calvert City does not purchase the Vector, the sewer department intends to sell the Vector by publicly advertising and selling by sealed bids. In the event the Vector is sold by sealed bid, the appraised value will be set at the minimum bid. 7.8, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between Core Health Incorporated, doing business as LifeSync, is otherwise known as Humana Vitality in the City of Frankfurt. This is an agreement to, well, this authorizes the mayor to sign this wellness agreement and any related documents to provide administrative and program support to implement and manage a wellness program for city employees. The Wellness Committee of city employees reviewed proposals and chose Humana Vitality as the wellness program. The cost for this program is approximately $40,000 and this cost will be included in the mid-year budget amendment that we discussed earlier in earlier meetings. 7.9 is to authorize an agreement with the University of Kentucky Research Foundation to update the South Frankfurt National Registered District nomination, including Phase Four survey, and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents and contracts. This is through the planning and building codes and grant manager. An architectural historian is required to do field survey documenting properties meeting the grant requirements. This survey work will focus on the next phase or 278 of 699 parcels within the South Frankfurt National Registered District. Through the survey process, properties will be photographed, documented and documented in the... Through the survey process, properties will be photographed, documented, and determined to be contributing to the district and may qualify for state and federal tax credits as an incentive to encourage rehabilitation of older structures. The consultant will also make recommendations to modify the existing national register boundary for South Frankfurt based on properties that are at least 50 years old. The scope of the work includes field survey, data collection, GIS mapping, preparation of survey forms, and national register nomination upgrade. The total grant award is $22,000. It's a CLG grant with an in-kind match of $8,800. In-kind match will be through Planning and Building Codes for $1,800 out of budget, and the remaining $7,000 match will be met with in-kind services from the staff. Item 7.10, approval of Amendment Number One to Professional Services Agreement with URS Corporation for Consulting Services associated with Phase Two of a feasibility study associated with the creation of a stormwater utility and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. In July, URS presented the results of Phase One Stormwater Feasibility Study to a joint meeting of the City Commission and Fiscal Court. The feasibility study recommended that the City of Frankfurt and Franklin County proceed with the development of a stormwater utility for the urbanized area of Franklin County and the City of Frankfurt. This amendment is the next step in this development. Amendment Number One is for $221,480, and this total so far is $271,455. Now, upon creation, this will be taken out of sewer budget, but upon creation of a stormwater utility and when adequate funds are available, the Sewer Department replacement account will be reimbursed. 7.11 is to authorize an agreement with the Marston Family Limited Partnership and authorize the mayor to sign related documents. Custom Data Processing, a company owned by the Marston Family Limited Partnership, has constructed a building on the back portion of their property at 951 Schnautt Road and wants to add sanitary facilities and connect to the sewer of the existing building. This agreement will allow them to make the connection as long as the property is not separated and sold as an individual piece of property. 7.12 is to authorize a bid award to Muster Emergency Vehicles Incorporated of Calhoun, Kentucky, for two ambulances to authorize the lease purchase financing over a five-year period and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. This would be the lease purchase of two 2013 International Type One ambulances. After investigating financing options and concurring with Finance Director, it's recommended the ambulances be financed for five years through a lease purchase program agreement with PublicFinance.com of Louisville, Kentucky for an approximate APR of 3.5. After a down payment of $10,170, which was obtained by Kentucky Board of EMS Grant, the remainder, $305,400, will be financed with annual payments of approximately $67,730. 7.13 is to authorize the mayor to sign an intent agreement between HealthSmartTPA and the City of Frankfurt. This authorizes the mayor to sign the agreement and any applicable documents with HealthSmartTPA, informing them of the city's intent to renew and to extend the agreement with HealthSmartTPA to provide third-party administration for the self-insured group insurance plan. This letter of intent will be effective for 90 days or less, and this agreement is only to express our intent to renew, and the city's insurance broker has solicited pricing and service information from several other potential vendors. HealthSmart will bring in-house, oh, in addition to the services provided, HealthSmart will bring in-house pharmacy benefit management document in its possession and will generate the actual administrative services agreement. The ASA or Administrative Services Agreement will be placed on the November agenda for consideration. 7.14, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between Anthem and the City of Frankfurt. This authorizes, well, Anthem will provide vision, health, vision care insurance under the city employee benefit program. This agreement is for a one-year period with three potential one-year extensions, and it provides a four-year price lock, which would run through December 31, 2016. This agreement with Anthem provides the benefit level and cost to the city and cost to the city continue providing a vision care plan for the employees. The new agreement plan provides much better benefit to the employees. The city's cost to approve this benefit is approximately $22,000 per year, more than our previous plan. And that is the, do we do personnel, I'm sorry about that. 7.15 is personnel, now that he's gone. Louis N. Hughes Retirement, Parks and Historic Sites, 1031, authorized payment for accrued leave, and resignation of Derek Taylor, police E-911, E-911 telecommunicator. By the way, he'd been with us about 10 years, and he's going to National Guard full-time. So he could be back as a part-time employee if they don't deploy him, so, but we wish Derek all the good luck in the world.
Indeed. Okay, we have, that concludes the consent agenda. Do I have a motion pertaining to, do I have, any more to approve it? Commissioner Turner, second. Commissioner May? All right, please call roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes, with 7.12 being $61,529 for a payment, not $67,529.
7.12?
Yeah, I think you misread that. I think you said it was $67,529, when it should be 61.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, so the consent count is approved. Our next item on the agenda are board appointments. Now, we have recommended to you the reappointment of four people for the Forestry Advisory Board. Those fours are Marie Cole, Becky Bishop, Dustin Dove, and Ken Coward, for terms that, each of these four terms will end on 5/8/14.
May I move that the commission accept the board appointments?
For approval by Commissioner May and second by Mr. Wilder. Any comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden? Yes? Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, so the Forestry Advisory Board reappointments are approved. Next item, old business in scheduling discussion of Louisville Hill Bicycle Lane Proposal. Mr. City Manager, you have any comments to make with this?
Well, I just stuck a piece of candy in my mouth, so no. Mr. Hackbart, if you would, please come up and bail me out here.
Last Monday, October 15th, we had a public hearing and had, I would say, 40 or so people at a public hearing, and we took public comment on the Louisville Hill bike lane. And at the, at that meeting, at the conclusion of that meeting, everybody was given the chance to speak and express their opinion, whether for or against the proposal of adding a bike lane up the hill and a shared lane with vehicular and bike lane down the hill. And from the tally that we have about a, kind of an even split, it was 10 to 9 in favor of the proposal. And so I guess at this point, what I had told the audience last Monday was, tonight we would discuss this as a city commission, and if it was decided to write a letter to the state in support, that would be discussed tonight at our meeting. So I guess we need direction as a staff to write a letter in support of changing the permit that Sewer Department has with the closing of Louisville Hill.
All right, Commissioner Wilder, come in.
Thank you, Jeff. As we all know, we've been receiving official input in a variety of forums, including on the city's website, including via emails, which we've all been provided by. The tally, the total tally is, there's a divide on this, certainly. We're looking at a tally of 158 voices of support and 140 voices of opposition. So that's, there's marginally more support for the proposal than opposition. I did, I'm inherently favorable towards safer accommodations for cyclists and pedestrians. And yet, considering the extent to which we made an effort to really seek the community's input, in lots of ways, turn this decision over to the community so that our request to the state can best reflect the community's wishes, I've really tried to keep an open mind going into this discussion. I can say that after hearing all the back and forth and pros and cons, and I'm happy to, for us to discuss this deeper, but I guess I'll just start by saying that I'm prepared to introduce a motion to ask the state to assess the safety of the proposed changes to Louisville Hill and to incorporate those changes if the professionals at the state do indeed determine them to be safe.
Yes, sir, Mr. City Manager.
Just one comment, and Mr. Scauf can advise. I understand you're making a little bit of progress on Louisville Hill than you first anticipated, or did you find rock again?
Yes and yes. We were making good progress last week till about midday Friday, and we found rock again. But we are about a third of the way done. This is the beginning of Week Three, and again, as a reminder, we have a closure permit for 10 weeks, so we have seven weeks left.
So this is a time-sensitive request if we were to get the change?
Yes, because if we have no other direction, when the road opens, it will go back exactly the same way it is today.
Thank you.
Or was when we closed it, I should say.
Okay, and let me get some clarification too. Commissioner Wilder, now, what were you proposing?
Well, granted, my understanding is that even if we were to simply request that the state adopt these changes, my understanding is that they wouldn't make them without first assessing the safety of the situation, and that that's one of the reasons, that's one of the reasons for the timeframe, is that the state needs to be given time to do that. So I just recognize in that the act of asking the state to adopt the changes does inherently include an assessment on their part that, whether or not these changes would be safe. Because obviously, they've got full staff of traffic engineers and folks who would not even entertain the possibility of doing this if it were found to be unsafe. But my inherent point there is that by having those professionals study the safety of the situation, I'm just hoping that would go a long way towards alleviating concerns that the bike lanes might make the road less safe.
I just wanted to make sure you heard everything right.
Sure.
Okay, another commissioner like to comment on this? Okay, Commissioner May?
Mayor, we haven't had a chance to read this whole packet of material, but it was on our dais tonight, where we've got the report from the fire, well, it's the EMS director. And so, could I ask the fire chief if he could just comment on this? I guess it's really a memo. And really, I guess my question is, this is on Fire Department Leaderhead, so I'm going to guess normally give reports through the fire chief, but this is from the EMS director, and just wanted to get your thoughts on it with what's in the report and what some of the concerns that your department has.
Right, yes, Steve did discuss that with me and asked my permission to forward that letter.
I keep saying, speak up a little bit.
EMS director...
It's my age, it's my age.
I forget, sorry. The EMS director did discuss wanting to send that letter to the board, and I concurred with it. We do have concerns. My biggest concern is what he points out in there is that a lot of motorists don't know how to react when a fire truck or an ambulance comes up behind them with red lights and sirens, and instead of pulling over as far as they can safely to the right, they'll suddenly hit their brakes and stop in the middle of the road. Now, it doesn't create a big problem, because generally we have that second lane that we can go around them, or if they're in the inside lane, we go around them on the right. Reducing it to one lane was our biggest concern, is that if they stop in the middle of the road, then we may have to veer into the oncoming traffic lane, or if there's a rock slide, like is so common, or a tree has fallen in the road, people are automatically then going to be steered toward that inside or oncoming lane. So we just have a concern that, well, to sum it up, it's in our mind, it's safer to have two uphill lanes than one. That's the bottom line. If we end up with the proposal as presented, having, as Mr. Swagert pointed out, basically 20 feet of pavement that we can deal with, we can probably handle that. But if we had to cast a vote one way or the other, our vote would be to keep it the way it is. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I guess I, oh, if I may.
Mr. Turner, do you want to come in?
Well, yes, thanks, Mayor. This has been a tough issue, and for those of you who have talked to me in the last few days about this issue, you know that I've gone back and forth from it. And I know Mr. Swagert said that it's not an, or it is an easy decision. Well, actually, it isn't an easy decision, simply because you have so many people who fear for the safety of bicyclists and themselves going up and down. But at the same time, you also have data that shows bike lanes promote safety and bring awareness to bicycles that are already on our roads. I also take into note our EMS director's concerns with going up there, but I think that that's something that we can accommodate if the rest of the board agrees. But I think in the final hours of the debate, I've come to the conclusion that, yes, I would support a bike lane.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Thank you, Mayor. I am a, I am a fan of bike lanes. I'm a fan of education, of making sure that people are educated with alternative means of transportation, sharing the road. But per the majority of all the phone calls, the people that have contacted me regarding this issue, I have to support them, and my vote is no in regard to passing this. I think there's other routes that we can take besides Louisville Hill.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
I just want to also note that I, that on the sentiment that Ms. Hayden, or Commissioner Hayden mentioned about other routes, I do think that there are alternative routes to Louisville Hill. I think that Tanglewood is an option to that, but I just wanted to throw that in there, that there are possible other routes, but I will support moving this forward to the state.